Call the city council budget workshop to order. Commissioner Smith, will you give us the prayer and the pledge, please, sir?
Our heavenly fathers, once again, that you have allowed us this opportunity to come in the service of this community. We ask the Lord that we prepare for our budget hearings and that you would continue to lead us and guide us. That will be good stewards of all the resources you provided for us in order this place could be a better place and they'll work into play. In thy son and Jesus's name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Chief Wileman.
Good afternoon, almost evening now, mayor, commissioners, members of the public. Sean Wileman, Fire Chief, here to present to the two thousand twenty-three, or excuse me, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal budget year request for the fire department. Um, one of the, one of the things we want to start out with is gratitude. I think one of the, one of the most important things as we've passed through these past couple of years and 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 five years during my tenure is we've had a lot of improvements, a lot of good things have happened at the fire department. One of those, as we look again at the gratitude, is our comparison across five very relatable fire departments related to us in size and structure and things like that. Um, one of the, one of the biggest things, you know, our population, as we're going to talk about in a few minutes, is steadily growing. Um, our area wise, you know, we are thirty-five, almost thirty-six square miles compared to a lot of other municipalities. They're almost half that size. Um, but as we move forward, we've established a very good foundation. We have a lot of firemen in place, a lot of stations in place. As we continue to grow, and we're going to show that, we need to make sure that we continue where we're at. So again, this is just the comparison of where we're at. Call volume trends over the past ten years, you can see there, definitely have exponentially grown over the past ten years. This last year, we're about eight call, eight call difference from the year before. Um, that's the actual record from ESO, which is our reporting. Um, shows it still at eighty-two percent EM, I'm sorry, fire EMS, eighty-two percent EMS and eighteen percent fire-related calls. So a total of nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine calls over, over two thousand twenty-three. Um, of those, average calls per station, station one's still definitely our heaviest call volume at ten point five-three calls per shift. Station two is four point five-nine, uh, station three is four point oh-one, station four is three point five-three, and station five is at three point four. Station six is at one point oh-nine, which is, uh, almost doubled since it's opening again as the, as we see the growth and the, and the construction that's going on in the area that's going to continue to grow. It's kind of a different breakdown, so it's our percentages per station as well, just a different way of looking at it. But station one's still running close to forty percent of our calls because it is the densest area. Our response times, again, response times include turnout time, which in other words, when the alarm goes off to the time they go responding in the trucks and the travel time. Our average, uh, ver- uh, response time for first seen it on scene is now at five minutes and twenty-two seconds. And again, we talked about growth within the city. And, uh, these numbers were compiled, uh, compiled by the City of Apocalla Community Development Department. And right now, currently, we have four thousand six hundred and fourteen dwelling units under construction. And a two-point-seven person per household, that's a, a population increase of twelve thousand, close to thirteen thousand people that are, that is currently under construction. Total dwelling units planned or under construction, again, is a seven thousand four hundred and eighteen, which is going to give us our total increase of twenty thousand over the next few years. Total square footage, which we definitely consider in the fire department, under construction currently is two point five million. Also planned in the future is close to eight million in non-residential. These are warehouses, um, you know, things of that nature, commercial structures. This is, uh, again, compiled by the, uh, with the help of, um, Mike Hoover, with the, uh, IT department, their GIS kind of shows our, our developments and what are happening. Um, the ones in the teal color are the commercial versus the lime green is the residential type construction. So as you, as we can see, our growth is definitely happening south towards station six and the future growth coming up in north side, northwest side for future growth of station seven. Um, this was provided by, uh, Schimberg, also through the community development department. It does show by two thousand twenty-five, we have a population of sixty-three thousand people in the city. We are still currently in ISO class one. This is the state of Florida for this year. Um, again, we've had this and maintained it since two thousand four. So this is the state of Florida. The number of ISO class one departments is fifty. Um, this is, um, on a national level, out of the forty-seven thousand departments that are rated, we are still class one, which is top one point oh-seven percent in the entire country. Getting into the budget now, um, starting with thirty-one hundred, one of our increases with our normal key changes over year to year is the addition of, um, the clinician review. We did start last year with our department clinician. It's been very successful. Um, we're ac- actually adding on this year an additional screening where she's actually going to look at each of those, um, evaluations we do on an annual basis, which is something that NFP is now requiring to make sure that everyone is is fit for duty, not only physically but mentally. Um, thirty-four hundred, uh, one of our big asks this year is a arrival live traffic control program. Um, we are responding to more and more responses on our highways, um, getting busier and busier. Um, what this does, it actually provides what's called an attenuator. Um, an attenuator is something that's designed or something even that's either passive or this is active now, where we can, this is mobile. We can move this where we need it to respond to. But it basically allows for, um, it's a road safety device designed to absorb the colliding vehicles velocity energy and bring it to a safe stop. So those are the things you see along the highways, the buckets of water or the things that are designed to absorb that. Well, what this company does is anytime we respond onto these highways, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, they're going to provide these vehicles for us, not only signs and things like that, but the, the picture to the right is actually an attenuator. It will sit and stage behind our units operating on the highways to ensure their safety. So then if something does happen and we have an impact, they hit that vehicle before they run into our vehicles. And this, this does hit, uh, hit home for us as we'd have one of our district chief vehicles that was hit, um, within a year, a year ago, on one of the highways.
I have a quick question on this one.
Yes.
Is that inclusive of the truck or is it just that apparatus on the back that it connects?
And the manning.
Say that again.
And the manning. So, uh, people will, will respond for this.
But it, it's a total truck. It's not just something that hooks up to a truck we have.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, total truck.
Nice, thank you.
Continuing, uh, with the chief's, uh, Fire Chief's Office, forty-three hundred, um, we did, uh, a fifty-three thousand dollar increase. Again, um, utilities have gone up substantially. This is kind of the market we're in now, uh, again, the trends we're seeing. So we're asking for a total of two hundred thousand dollars for utility services. Along the same lines, office supplies, uh, we've doubled that this year because we're trending at almost having to spend that this year. So we're going up and the cost of everything is kind of going up. Operating supplies for the Fire Chief's Office, again, um, one of our most, uh, let me make sure. Yeah, station supplies, again, same, same trending, you know, they're going up substantially as far as the cost and just the cost of doing business. Again, this covers all of our, um, station applies, supplies for the stations, cleaning equipment, um, toilet paper, things like that. So that's kind of how everything comes out of that. Uh, training, you're going to see a substantial increase in Chief's Office training. What we did, um, we were finding throughout the past couple of years, we had the training funds, the twelve hundred dollars um, per firefighter split between EMS and fire suppression. Um, and during the middle of, um, the year, we would have someone who would become, become a paramedic or move divisions. So instead of, um, having to worry about all of that, we just reassigned all the training into the Chief's Office. So that's why you see that, um, hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred dollar increase, which includes a twelve hundred for each firefighter. Uh, two other things that we're excited about, uh, leadership development classes, um, a company called Fully Involved Consulting. Uh, he's a gentleman who is actually a battalion chief of South Florida. Um, he's going to come and actually offer to forty-seven of our firefighters a leadership, week-long leadership training. Um, also gets them, uh, exposed to different things like that. And he's done things not just within the fire service, outside of fire service. He was, uh, um, held with Harley Davidson of, of all companies. It was a company, a big company. He helped with a lot of leadership training with that. So we're, we're offering that to our department. Um, Gasaway Situational Awareness, um, it's online academy. This is again for our entire department that deals with all those types of, how to have those, those, uh, not just leadership training, but situational awareness, how to, how to grow as, as a leader as a whole, um, which I think is important for our entire department. Those are two things we've added in the Fire Chief's, uh, training. So, uh, twenty-one twenty, moving into suppression. Again, one of our big things that happened over this, uh, this past year was a, a very big increase in our repair and maintenance of our, uh, fire trucks. Um, we've had an, about a ninety-five thousand dollar increase due to costs. And again, this also, um, this actually is for our building and maintenance as a whole across the, across all of our buildings. And a big thing was asked for the tr- rep- repainting of the training center. Um, we asked, asked for it last year. The quote came back substantially higher than expected. It's actually sixty thousand now to repaint the training center and the training tower itself. So that's a big increase for repair and maintenance of building and equipment.
Uh, before you go.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that it was, uh, approved last year with the last fiscal.
We had monies in there to paint the training center, but we only had ten thousand dollars.
How much did you have last year?
Ten thousand.
Okay.
So we're asking for sixty this year because the quote came back at sixty.
So for, so we are bringing ten thousand forward from last year? What, what did you do with the ten thousand that was sitting?
It's just, it, it pretty much just goes, it gets absorbed back anyway.
Please make sure your mic is on.
Oh.
Yeah, the only thing we roll is capital projects, is he's rebudgeting at, at the higher amount. So he won't start the project until next year. Okay. So the ten thousand would just go into the reserves. Okay, okay, okay.
So forty-six fifty, uh, vehicle maintenance, this was, um, I was alluding to before, we've had a hundred thousand dollar increase due to cost of repairs and apparatus. Um, that was looking at our trends this year. We've had two fire trucks that have had major repairs that we got, uh, kicked off the year with that, starting with that, which, uh, tends to happen. We, we do have several in order, as you know, that we're waiting for. We want to make sure that we keep our, our current fleet up and operational. So that's a substantial increase there. Again, operating supplies, um, uh, two hundred thirty-one thousand dollar increase for a total of one point one million for our, uh, operational cost. Some of the, uh, new initiatives we're looking at for these, um, last year, if you remember, we actually added the Tech Gen fifty-one gear, which is a lighter weight gear, um, for responding to incidents, uh, outside of structural firefighting, i.e., uh, brush fires, they can wear it on, they can wear it on, um, um, auto extracations, rope rescues, confined space, things like that, where they don't have to wear the thermal, uh, protection. Allows for a little bit cooler response. Well, this year we added the specific boots, uh, to complete that complement. Um, and, uh, we actually just received the Tech Gen fifty-one gear last week. So we're, we're something we're going to be able to roll out, make sure that everyone has access to that. With that also, we're also adding, uh, traffic incident management gear and accessories. Uh, that's, uh, any, any traffic incidents, we're updating all of our safety vests. Uh, we're also adding in different accessories as far as cones, specific DOT, um, you know, required cones and uh, replacing, replacing our old, old stuff. Another thing we're also adding is rehabilitation stations, uh, to both of our district chief vehicles and captain vehicles. So when we respond to an incidence, they're going to be able to automatically deploy these types of things. So it includes a tent, coolers, fans, benches. So when our firefighters are, uh, in the middle of fire and they do go to rehab, they're actually going to be able to, um, immediately have that access to that, the rehabilitation, um, um, tools. Another big thing, we're adding personal escape systems. Uh, these are bailout systems for our firefighters for multi-story structures. It's eighty-two thousand, um, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. This will give access to every firefighter to have, basically, it's a life safety rope that's attached to them at all times. Um, and it's, uh, we're going to obviously do some significant training on how to use it, um, and when, when that would apply. But something for, specifically for multi-story structures, as we know, we're adding a lot of those in apartments and things like that to our area. Um, another thing we're adding, the fire station refurbish upgrade projects, again, upgrading all of our stations. I believe Radley went into some of the, you know, significant improvements we're making with that. This is all of the, the appliances, the beds, things like that to go into the station. So that's where our budget comes in, the two hundred ninety-one thousand is for those equipments needed for the upgraded projects for the station refurbish.
Quick question on that one, sorry to interrupt again.
Yeah.
Does, is that inclusive of like I wash stations, ice makers, things like that?
Some of those are separated out.
Okay.
Yeah, they're like, um, we just ordered actually the I wash stations and, and the ice makers. We have our temporary ones that are in place now. We're actually ordering the, the commercial grade, um, that's.
It's line item somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Do the improvements, um, we have approved a few improvements for certain, uh, firehouses.
Hmm.
Were they done during this, this fiscal year?
Yeah, there, yeah, there's certainly, there's a, there's a list, a, a, a list that what Rally's been working through. And I know there are certain improvements they're going through. What we're talking about doing for next year is like station, station three, for example, you know, we, we really looked at it, we're, or station four, excuse me, we, we looked at it. We, that's really going to have to be a complete overhaul. You know, we went into the idea of where we can make certain adjustments, but now this year, we're twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we're planning on just completely gutting it, starting from scratch, making separate rooms, making airlocks. In other words, when you walk from the, the bunker room out into the bay, we want some sort of vestibule that separates those two. And with that airlock system that keeps them completely separated, if that makes sense. So we're really ramping up what we're doing. And a lot of those are currently in the conceptual plans and they're supposed to go to architects, architectural plans within the month. And then that's for, and starting, I believe, we're starting that for this year and we're going to complete station four by, by the end of next year with, with plans for other stations coming on as well.
Do you know how much, and sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry. No, to, how much did we budget or how much have we budgeted for station four to kind of do all those?
That would have to be honestly a Radley question.
Okay.
I, I.
Is it, it's in here somewhere, though?
Not in our budget.
It's on his?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this, again, this is just, we, we budgeted for what physically goes in the stations.
I got you, thank you.
And, and what about the updated kitchens? Because I went into a couple of the station houses and they still don't have their kitchens. And they were promised, like, with station two when I went there.
Right, again, all that is being, that's been the conceptual plans. Again, the plans, the, so we're, we're, we're stepping back and re- revamping everything and really co- coming in and fixing, not even like upgrading stuff. We're almost redoing a lot, redoing most of the stations, remodeling. So it's, uh, it's going to be a bigger project. And again, right now, it's in the conceptual plans, getting ready to go to the archi- architectural designs.
But didn't we, didn't we approve those last year?
Yeah, we got. I think what the amount we had was a hundred and fifty thousand and that's not going to cover what we're asking for. But again, Radley has more of that.
And, and I think you asked this question at one of the previous council meetings and he's supposed to come back with an update for you guys on all the fire stations.
Hmm.
It is in, some of that money is in the current twenty twenty-four budget. So we can get that information from Radley and send it out and get a status update because I think this question came up at one of the previous.
It did, um, yeah, because, you know, with the fifteen days of hope, we got, I've got to see some of the stations. And I remember that we had already approved some of the remodeling, especially in the kitchens.
Correct.
Um, all right, so.
We can get that information for you.
Okay, but Radley's already presented his budget and I don't remember.
No, it's in the current year budget.
So station four remodeling is in.
Some of the fire stations. I can't remember whether the station four is or is not, but it may be included in that, but I'll get the information from Radley.
I believe it was only like a hundred and fifty thousand of last year that we were going to do station four. There was a design and architect came in. But I think to the point that was made is that there's much bigger renovations.
Right.
But to Commissioner Smith's point, I don't remember hearing a specific line item to overhaul, uh, station.
If the additional funds were included in twenty twenty-five is what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, I'll find out and I'll take a look. Okay.
All right, uh, suppression training, again, as we know, we took, like I mentioned before, we took the bulk of the training funds um, from twenty-one twenty and twenty-one thirty and put them into twenty-one ten, um, so that we can take them all. But we did add in, uh, Lexipool Officer Development, and this is something Chief Knapp wanted specifically for officer development. It's an online a- access, um, Lexipool is actually, um, Gordon Graham is a, a famous guy in the fire services. If you have never, uh, Googled him or watched any of his YouTube videos, he's, he's definitely a foundational leader um, for the risk management in particular, was one of his, uh, he created Lexipool. So it's, it's, again, it's a good, good, uh, pool that our officers are going to be able to have access to and, and increase their, their, uh, knowledge and training as officer development goes. Um, suppression, uh, we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase. Again, the fire station renovations, this is something we added in this year, separate from, um, what we talked about before for the, um, the, the equipment that goes inside. This is in, uh, is designed, when we do go to renovate station four or whatever station we're walking on at the time, we're going to have to have temporary housing. Um, so that's something that was established here that we're going to be able to move our guys and working with AJ from facilities and orchestrating some of that where there, what is currently at the station four, that, that's being worked on. Obviously, the bays can still be utilized, but having somewhere that temporary housing, that's what this is assigned for. The Conex boxes, um, Chief Knapp, another thing he asked, with seven more boxes, we're going to be able to add a third floor to our existing properties out there. Gives us a lot more, um, you know, availability, things we can practice, things like that. So that's eighty thousand dollars for those additional boxes. Uh, equipment and machinery, again, this is our depreciation schedule. Um, as you can see here, as includes all of our pumper, pumpers and aerials. Um, this does not include our brush, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, our tower truck is currently on order just because we haven't received it yet. Obviously, it's still, um, going to come in sometime next year. But it does, uh, show where we're at. So again, um, last year we replaced, uh, or a few, when we got engine four, that replaced old engine eleven. Um, twenty-two, twenty-three, we have an engine in production from that year that we're supposed to receive, uh, within this, uh, fiscal year and start being able to put some of that, uh, equipment on that that's also in this budget. And also last year, we asked for additional engine, um, engine three, which is also in production. We've had the, uh, we're going to have our kickoff meeting for that. So we have two engines that are currently on the way. We're asking for a third one request this year for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, which is going to replace engine eleven. So again, our total ask this year and, and a couple of, um, of vehicles, but that is going to, uh, cost one point three million dollars for that, for equipment and machinery.
So, I'm sorry, so you're asking for another apparatus?
A fire truck, yes.
Another fire truck?
Two, actually two, so a brush truck and a fire truck, um.
So if we put this in this year's budget, when does that fire truck come?
It'll be at least a year and a half to two years. That's a, they're so far behind what we're working. That's why the, the one, um, again, we received, uh, engine four in two thousand twenty-two. The one we're actually at, that we're asked for in twenty-two, twenty-three, we're getting ready to receive in the next four, four months.
And we have to pay for it in advance?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to be hundred, hundred percent funded, yep. So, uh, last year, you remember, we finished out and replaced all of the pumps on the brush trucks. Um, one of the things we were working with, uh, fleet maintenance and, and things like that, the, our brush trucks were actually, um, the oldest one we have is in the eighties, uh, one of the new, the newest one we have is in the nineties. Um, and something that, um, Charlie from Fleet recommended that because of just now they're getting parts to even fix some of those trucks and, and really, one of the things we also wanted to add was the extended cab onto the brush trucks. Now that we have, uh, more app, more manpower and apparatus, so we do respond, someone will be able to ride in the back of that vehicle, um, instead of just deploying two people in the brush truck. So, um, we've asked for one, we're going to replace those over the next three years, uh, to, uh, for all three of our brush trucks. The, uh, again, like I mentioned, engine eleven replacement, the apparatus will replace engine three as a front run and the current engine three will replace engine eleven. So that kind of how that trickles down and works out. But that cost for a new fire truck is, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars for the truck alone. That does not include the equipment.
Do we donate the older apparatuses? Do we donate them or do we sell them forward? Do we get anything for them?
No, uh, believe it or not, most of them we've held on to for, like, right now, currently, we have one that's down at the training center, you know, that we want to see, see for training, yes.
For training?
Hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, when we, that's something we can look at. The last one we got rid of was old tower two, which is in seventies, you know, that was, you know, obsolete for sure. So that's something went to auction and, you know, things like that. That's something Fleet handles as a disposal, depending on what, you know. Um, something else, uh, we added that, uh, we're excited about is a pump operations panel training simulator. Again, we're talking about wear and tear on vehicles. Uh, this simulator actually replicates and when we get this, uh, this up and running, it'll, it'll look like just one of our pump, exactly like one of our pumps. And it's a ba- basically a computer programmer, a big simulator that allows us to simulate operations or pumping operations utilizing this versus utilizing a real truck and, and saving some of that wear and tear. So that's, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars for that.
So let me just ask you, what are you training with right now without this?
Our, our, our vehicles, our reserve apparatus and.
Okay.
Yeah, yep. So twenty-one thirty, emergency medical services, um, again, there's been an increase in the biohazard waste disposal. Um, that's our, our stair cycle contracts and, um, anytime, obviously any sharps and things like that, we actually, actually collect them from the public as well. Not just our internal use, but external use as well. Um, and our striker equipment, um, is increased, so we went up forty-eight thousand, uh, due to those two factors. Uh, rentals and leases, um, we went up thirty thousand, our oxygen cylinder rentals for, we're asking for a total of fifty thousand for that this year. When station six does open, it will have a, um, cascade system there. So we will, this is a temporary, um, thing for this year. Once six opens, we will have, be able to back that down again to allow for us to fill our own oxygen. Um, repairs and maintenance of building and equipment, again, is a thirteen, uh, thousand dollar increase again, just to, uh, the cost with, with the things associated with that. Vehicle maintenance, again, um, we saw a spike in increase in our, um, repairing of our annlasses this year. So we're asking, uh, uh, to go up to a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is based on our trends from this year and what we're spending and what we're asking for. Um, training, again, uh, we increased that. We did take, again, like I said earlier, the, uh, firefighter training funds and, and put them all into, uh, twenty-one ten. But this, where we've increased slightly so that we can actually pay and cover for um, all of our, uh, advanced cardiac life support, our BLS, which is, um, basic life support. All of our certifications that are required to maintain and also our state certification costs as well. And this still does include the paramedic reimbursement for all of our firefighters who want to go to paramedic school.
Right now, what, what are you, um, reimbursing with paramedic, the paramedic school? Right now, what, what are you um reimbursing with paramedic, the paramedic school? What's the co- what, how are you reimbursing, what's the?
So they, they come to us, they wanna go to school, they present the, us with their bill and we pay it. It depends on what school they're going to, I I mean, averages eight to ten thousand per firefighter.
So that's what, if someone, if one of them, do they pay upfront and then they come back when they successfully complete the program? They submit?
N- now we pay upfront.
Excuse me?
Now we pay upfront.
So now you pay upfront, so depending on what school they go to, you pay the school? And it's ten thousand dollars?
On average, yeah, eight to ten thousand is what medic school costs. Um operating supplies, um we did have, again, an increase just to rise of cost and also the addition of um EMS simulation equipment for training. Uh we call it the moulage kits, which is uh replicates some of our wounds and things we see in the field. Um another big thing we increased in that we're having to uh our active shooter personnel protective equipment is actually um, it expires. Um and so that's something we have to replace, so we've added that this year to operating supplies, so total of four hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Again, this is our um depreciation schedule on the EMS side, it does show um again where we're at with our current amelices. The uh, the good news is we're making headway, we did receive um uh Amos Three about a month and a half ago, um that's one we ordered in twenty twenty one. That's how long it's taking us to get these amelices, in fact, it is a two thousand twenty two vehicle. This is taking that long to get through the process of ordering and we're not the only ones feeling this, it's all, all across uh our, definitely our region and the country as a whole. Um we do have uh one more that's coming that we actually ordered in twenty two, twenty three. Um or I also asked for two last year, or the current budget year for twenty three, twenty four, so we have actually three more we're waiting on. As they work their way through the processes. Um and we're actually adding one, another one this year, so that's our request this year is for another ambulance uh to replace. But this will allow us to keep us um within our useful life and making sure that we're rotating those amelices and getting what we need. So again, what we're asking for is the ambulance and equipment uh for three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars out of EMS for machinery. Uh two positions we're asking for uh to, right off the get go, October is a Fire Safety Inspector uh request. We're asking for um two civilian fire inspectors. Um and again, one of the, one of the biggest things is we, was we shown earlier, the growth that's coming in, the new construction that's coming in. Um currently, we have uh Captain Holderfield who heads our uh Life Safety Division, who is uh constantly out there working. Um getting so, getting this, this uh, these projects complete. And we also have the steady increase of our annual inspections, you know, we do about close to two thousand annual inspections a year on the existing, um existing buildings we have out there. So by hiring these two uh inspectors that will work directly under uh Captain Holderfield, we're gonna be able to take care of all those existing inspections, which allow, allows Captain Holderfield to concentrate on new construction and plans review and things like that. Um so we're asking for two of those, um and that's the pay grade done here. But again, as we know, that uh with the rise in new construction and the steady increase, it's, it's gonna cause a um you know, a lot of extra work, um and another thing, it kind of centralizes where the inspections are coming from, right now, we have our, our shift personnel who do complete those and Captain Holderfield has to follow up on all those things. If we have three people who are concentrated specifically on that, I think it's gonna make it much more proficient in a, you know.
How are you dealing with the fire safety inspections?
Our shift, our shift personnel are doing this.
Are they all certified? And how many, I mean, how many uh, I guess dwellings or?
So we do nineteen, nineteen, uh close to two thousand ins- inspections a year and growing because any, you know, as we increase, obviously. And that's something, not, that's just existing, not including new construction and new development that's coming in.
And is it done every year for the same facilities?
And why, why, why are they classified as civilian, I guess that's?
Well, so the, to be a s- an inspector, you don't have to be a certified firefighter. Um I think, and I think the importance of this is to have two people who that's their bread and butter, they're like a city of a Coey, Orlando utilizes a lot of just these types of inspectors. Um and again, it's a different, it gives them a different perspective, I think, you know, that's, that's their main goal. Our firefighters will still be responsible for going out and looking at the buildings for pre-planned purposes. Um again, separate that from inspections, that's where they go at and look at it from a tactical standpoint, okay? Where's our exits, where's our, our suppression systems, things like that, so the, having this civilian inspectors out there really again, helps them kind of have their limitation, their, their specific job task. And I won't go in the police because I'll try and take their money.
Alright, any, any further questions for the chief?
So total of what you're asking for, um what's the total that you're asking for with all this stuff, with everything that you have here?
I believe it was.
And she said they gave us, these numbers are so tiny.
You're gonna do it by division? Yeah, because you don't have a grand. And you do have a, uh she don't have.
I, I do have these sheets, the numbers are like, I can't even see them with.
For twenty one ten. The total is. The total is three million, four forty, one ninety. That's twenty one ten, for twenty one twenty, the total is ten million, three, three, six, two, five, six.
I'm sorry, ten million?
Three, three, six, two, five, six. And for twenty one thirty. Is, the total is twelve million, seven eighty four, zero, zero, two, for the grand total of twenty six million, five sixty. Five six, twenty six million, five six.
Is it twenty six million or twenty eight million?
Twenty eight million. Line a left, it's, we all have it.
I know that, but I can't see it, that's why I'm asking.
I don't know, I, I see, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still gonna go with twenty. No, twenty six.
Oh, twenty six.
Twenty six, five, sixty, four, four, eight.
And I thank you, it's just that these numbers are so tiny that even these glasses are not helping me. Thank you.
Where are you seeing twenty six at, twenty six million?
That was general fund total, you're adding in the impact fee fund. The impact fee fund is another million.
Direct me to the page, please.
The impact fee fund is on page eleven of eleven, the total for just the three that he just presented is on page ten of eleven.
Twenty six, five, sixty, four, forty eight, okay.
You got another one point nine for the impact fee fund, okay? And that, of course, is all related to the public safety building that we're constructing, the design and all that work going towards that. Okay, you're welcome, and I did get an update from Radley, he will be bringing to council um for Fire Station Four.
Two and three.
Let me get it right, two and three, correct. Um the architect, the architect estimates and, because that's what they're waiting on, they're waiting on the architect to give them the estimates and they'll come back with what that actual cost is, and at that time, they'll request additional funding is needed over that hundred and fifty. So it will be incorporated in the FY twenty four budget and rolled over, if not completed, which it probably will not be completed.
And that's the two, three and four?
Yes, Fire Station Four, two and three, yes, sir. And he said that will be completed in the next few weeks. Alright, anybody else, if not, open up to the public.
Mike Durant, Clermont. You know, I appreciate what the Fire Department is proposing, and I think that the main issue is and I don't think it's unique to the Fire Department, I think it's unique with this city management. I watched all the other workshops yesterday and the day before, and all your directors are mentioning lack of staff and lack of funding. Nobody wants to hear that their taxes are going up, but I don't see how this is unavoidable. I know that raising the mileage rate is not the end of all ends, and you all are employed to be creative and get the funding rather than always year after year dipping into the reserves. The poor management and leadership in this city is astounding to me. What happened to the twenty thousand dollars that was allocated over a year ago for the safety signal out at Station One? You all approved it, the money was there, why is it still not done? When Chief Wollin was up here and he was talking about ten thousand dollars that was allocated to the training center to you know, paint that and this and that or whatever, and then Blanche says that that was put back into the general fund. That doesn't go to the general fund, that goes to our Fire Department. Why was it not done? The same thing with the safety signal, where is that money, is that back in the general fund? Because I know it's not sitting out there on Fifth Street. We also need to find out when these fire stations are being refurbished, I hope that you guys are able to really get into the nuts and bolts of it and find out exactly what's being done. Because of the poor leadership and management with this city, that is, I mean, it is ridiculous. It really is, I don't know who is running this show, but you're not doing a very good job, when money cannot be accounted for when a department asks for money to do a, a street signal and it's been over a year and it's still not done. Who is gonna be held accountable for that? Do we hold the chief accountable or do we hold you accountable for it? Why is it not done? Who dropped the ball? Where's the money at? Why is the signal still not there? When we come to refurbishing, uh refurbishing the fire stations, this is desperate, we need to do this. And you really need to get into, because of the poor leadership and management of this city when our chief comes up here and says, I want, you know, what is it, two hundred and, what is it, two hundred ninety one thousand dollars? We wanna make sure that he gets that money, so we wanna know what's being done, is he replacing the cabinets and the appliances? Is he painting, is he putting new beds in and what is he doing? And give him the two hundred and ninety one thousand dollars. We're gonna budget it, you approved it, you approved a twen- a twenty thousand dollars he didn't get. He proposed it and we didn't get it, why? Who do we yell at? Who do we blame? Do we blame our chief or do we blame you guys sitting up here? When Fire Chief Wollin talks about Station Four being completed and refurbished and within a month, come on. We can't get a traffic signal in over a year. Let's be realistic when we come here and what we're asking for and what we want. So we didn't get the traffic signal for over a year and we think that we're gonna be able to refurb Station Four in a month. Come on, we know that's not gonna happen, so we need like realistic expectations and realistic numbers. And we also need somebody, I don't know who it is, is it you guys up here? Should we be sending you guys emails or do we need to be talking to the Fire Administration when things aren't being done? If you can at least answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm not done, I don't care, Mayor, I'm not done, I don't care. Get McKinley and his guys and escort me out of here. I don't think you do, because for the two years since my son's death, because of the poor management and leadership in this city, you still have not fixed it. You don't understand. I am sick and tired of all of this happening under your watch and in my view, and my son paid the ultimate price. I will not be quiet, I will not be silenced, not by you or anyone. Our chief is asking for suppo- supplies and money, he asked over a year ago for the signal, where is it? Where is it, where is it? How do you not know, you said, excuse me, sir, you said you are the CEO. I don't care. No, that's screwing me out. You said you're the CEO of this city, you said it on the news, you said it to all your residents, you run this city. And you don't know? Who knows?
I'll get you an answer tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Mayor, you've been mayor for this city for how long? I will be back, I promise you. You need answers and you need to address the people that put you in that seat and my family. You don't, don't pretend like you do. You take care of our firefighters, they're still working without a contract. Who's holding out of, you don't know? Do you know?
Rod Olson, three one fifty six, Rollingo's Lane. Chief, asking you the same question that I've asked every other department head, does this represent everything that you need in materials, people and equipment to meet our current needs as well as our growth? Thank you.
Hey Swaddle, well, I guess the hundred and fifty thousand dollars councilman that y'all approved last year for new stoves and stuff is gonna get rolled back into the general fund, is that correct? A hundred, where's that money at, Brian? Mayor, sorry, whatever it is. This is the sorriest leadership administration I've ever seen. My eleven year old granddaughter can take care of a budget better than this, and she's only eleven. And you claim to be a leader. You've lied since you took office, now you got the Fire Administration, a chief that I still don't approve, but at least he's up here begging for money to keep the good department going and training. And you can't even answer simple questions, send sixty thousand dollars to paint a fire station? That's wild, I mean, a training center, it ain't that big of a training center. But ten thousand went back in the general fund because of y'all let it slide back. The money that Mr. Graham's sitting there talking about for the uh traffic signal out there. Mayor, that you take full control, you said, you run everyday operations here in the city and you don't know where the citizens' money's going, taxpayers' money's just going away. You blame the last administration on losing millions of dollars or stealing it, misappropriating it. And how you just won't come in and take over and fix the budget. We ain't never been such a big damn mess in our life till you got in here. Ain't nothing been straight since you came in. I'm asking you, councilman, please, what Chief Wollin's asked for, please adhere to it and help this department out. We're getting ready to add all these people in Northwest City of Apop out there. We're gonna need more EMS people, we're gonna need more firefighters. They're building wooden structures out there so a fire's not gonna just sit there, burn and go out, it's not blocked, three story buildings. Three-story buildings that are made out of wood. You'll have a bunch of units respond if we have a fire out there. You'll have a bunch of personnel. And you leave everybody in the city needing, without support. Please support Chief Willems and his budget. And I'd like to know where someone needs to answer. We're at $150,000 just for the stoves and stuff. You walked into a hell of a mess, man. Good luck.
Jeff Tyer, 1120 Leg Drive, Apopla, Florida. We've made some, you guys have made some great strides in the last year with fire administration and the fire department concerning safety. And we don't need to be taking any steps backwards with that. They're really doing pretty good. I was so glad to hear Chief Willems get up here and ask for two civilian fire inspectors. That is so important because I used to do that job myself, like Captain Holderfield's doing now. That's a great move to do that. And I would suggest to even further, maybe next year, ask for a third one. Because the growth that we're having, he cannot stay on top of it. And we cannot miss the important details and facts with these buildings that are going up out here. These multi-story condos and apartments. The one thing that I would like to address, I still would like to see us moving towards that fourth firefighter to meet that national safety standard on our fire engines and ladder trucks. It was a big step with the Austin 18 to put the third firefighter on the truck. I know it's a cost issue. If there's a way that we could look at a step plan over the next six, eight years to hire three or four or whatever we have to do each year to get that fourth firefighter on those ladder trucks and on those fire engines. I know the chief has budgeted for another tower unit out in the Station 5 area. Very important thing that we have a truck company out there and it needs to be properly staffed. I think we all saw the Miami Nursing Home Fire that was a couple of weeks ago. City of Miami, they have four firefighters on their ladder trucks and on their fire engines. And they were making ground ladder rescues of the elderly coming out of those buildings. We look at these multi-structure, multi-story structures that we're building now in this city. It's changing the face of our city. We have to prepare for that. So let's keep that in mind when we're thinking about this budget process. I pray for all of you because you've got a big task ahead of you with mileage rates. Where we're going to find this funding for all of these projects. I watched last night's presentation, which was incredible. And Chief McKinley's going to get up here and he's going to request some things. And we just remember that our public safety in this city is priority one. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I've got a couple of questions just to follow up. I just want to say thank you to all the residents that did speak. I appreciate you guys giving your opinions and echoing your sentiments there. Chief, in reference to, and I wanted to say, I think it's really smart and cool that we're doing the connects boxes. I think that's smart for the multi-story buildings we're going to be possibly dealing with. So I appreciate you guys doing that. The, um, do we have any plans in the near future to do a fire station seven up in like the KPI? Is that on any horizon?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's part of, it's actually part of the capital improvement plan anyways. You know, that's, that was the main. Again, because it's taking so long to get the additional tower, the tower truck. That's why it was ordered last year because we're still going to wait another year and a half, two years to get that. And that's when really truly seven should start coming to fruition again. Procuring the land where it's going to go. I truly believe, I've talked to several other, we need to get a study to see where it actually needs to go. Something, you know, so we can provide the best responses from that area. Again, a lot of times people think, oh, let's put it on the, right in the middle of everything. That's not how, a lot of times how it works with a fire station. Sometimes off the beaten path is a better option. So you're not, like Station 3, we're doing obviously with the Pima and Kaiba, high speeds. It's better sometimes to be. So again, things like that, definitely in, 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 I'm thinking next year is when we're going to really start seriously talking.
Start planning and doing studies? Okay, understood. So 25, 26. Do we want to have the conversation now of union? Or do we want to save that for later?
Think it was going to be at the seven o'clock meeting, but that's up to Jacob if he cares to discuss.
Yeah, I don't want to jump the gun here. If we've already set and planned, then let's, I'm fine to stick with whatever schedule we have. I didn't know if it needed to be.
Yeah, let's put it on that, the seven o'clock meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And Chief, while you're at the podium, have we ever considered having a cleaning service to come to clean our fire stations? Maybe on a monthly basis, rather than strictly relying on our firefighters to do that?
That's something we can certainly look at. It's not something in this budget this year, no.
Well, I'm going to ask if you would, check and see what that cost would be. We have to do a budget amendment. Then we will. I think that's something that'd be of value to our stations and to the health of our firefighters as well.
Just so I can get a good note, you said cleaning services for?
For the fire stations.
Yeah. That's something I can again discuss with Bradley too, you know, facilities side.
Okay, alright. And then lastly, do you know how much of this current budget that you did not spend? Currently right now? About the $10,000. And that's because the price came in at greater than $10,000 we allocated.
Right. Yeah, we, well, we run, you know, I run a weekly report and look at that sort of stuff. So each line's kind of different. I'd be happy to sit down with you at your meeting and show you exactly. But, you know, basically, the way I look at it is I take 100% over and divide it by 12 months. 8.33% a month is the way I look at it. And where we're trending and certain things like that. And, you know, a lot of times we do move monies. You know, if we have an increased cost in our analysis, for example. You know, we have to transfer that money out of somewhere else to make sure that we stay afloat. So there's lots of moving parts, if that makes sense. But I'd say we're right on track for the 75% where we should be right now as far as total spending. But I don't, I would have to run through it for, you know.
Okay. And then my last question is, I know that we have policies and procedures in reference to finance as to how purchase orders are approved. And I'm just concerned if there was an emergency or something that we needed, is there a alternative process about which that can be taken place?
Emergency procurement. Yeah, that's something, yeah. And we've, we've, we've used it. You know, so some of that example, you know, fast to bypass, you know, certain quotes or thresholds or things like that. It's an emergency procurement policy, yes.
Okay. And then I know we discussed the renovation already in reference to the kitchen and what have you. And I think the last report that we received was something about we're doing stainless steel countertops. And so that was a backlog, a holdup. Do we know where that is at this point?
Well, Station 1 was, has been completed. You know, that's, that's actually the hoods up and running, the hood system and everything in there. So that station was the first one we did, we targeted. Again, Station 4 being our next with the design piece coming into play and those things being allocated. So that's, again, all that's being, is in the works.
So are we going to hold off on doing that until we do the complete overhaul or?
Why don't we have maybe next, I don't know if we can pull it off next council meeting? Have Bradley and AJ come in and give us kind of an update?
Yeah, they'll be able to.
I don't know if we can pull it off for next Wednesday, but if not next Wednesday, yeah, yeah. We will definitely get a status. What's that?
You meaning for the 17?
I don't know if we can pull it off by then. I'd rather, let's just make it for the first meeting in August.
In August for nothing?
Yeah, yep, yep, yep. And we'll, Jake, be sure to let's put the traffic light on there. I mean, the safety light.
Safety signal.
Do you want me to provide a little update on that now?
Yeah, you, oh, you, oh, sure.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, basically, we have, again, the designs, components for each of the stations and signalization is almost 90%, complete now. Again, we targeted the brain priority being Station 3 because of the high-speed traffic and the things out there. The next being Station 1 because it does not currently have a signal. And it's a lot, it's not just the signals out there, it's how the traffic flow works. And we've been working with the traffic engineers and things and how to work some of those problems out. And also Station 4 and then Station 2 behind that. So again, we do have the pieces in place. We actually do have monies allocated this year that we're trying to work through the design piece first and then get the construction piece started before the end of this fiscal year. That's the design. And then come back next year asking for more money to complete those projects. That's something that's coming out of, of, of traffic. You know, Pam Richmond helped out a lot on that, so.
So they're being, they're 90% through planning.
Yes.
Are we budgeting in this budget to get them completed next fiscal year? And this?
Again, we have, we have about $497,000 this year. It's coming out of the transportation related stuff. And then we're also, oh, excuse me, working with public services and to see what we need to complete all the projects.
So we should be able to see those 24, 25?
Yes, I feel very comfortable with that statement, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Plaskins?
I saw it here in expense for like promotions, flags and that. But other than I've been seeing it on Facebook. Before you used to have like little, um...
Oh, like worship ceremony?
Yeah, you used to have some kind of ceremony where if families were invited, we were, we went to support that. That's something that's been kind of missing in the last two years. I mean, I appreciate seeing it on Facebook, but I feel we should try and go back to that where we can bring the families and.
Sure, I agree. And there's, there's money budgeted for that, for this year.
Promotion is, is a big deal. And we should recognize them for that. And it's a way of, of doing two things. And that is kind of bringing a community together and some healing and, and bringing up the morale in your fires department. I think it's important. So if we can consider to do that, we, we spend, we allocate a lot of funds for different events here. And I think we should do that for our home, so.
Sounds good.
Please make sure that we can try and do that because I saw some recent promotions. And maybe we can have a day where we can bring them all in and have something for them.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Just have a quick question so I can kind of understand. So in regards to the fourth firefighter, firefighter on the truck, is that an industry standard to have a fourth firefighter on the truck? Or is it, is it a safety issue? Not having a fourth firefighter on the truck?
So 1710 is the standard that requires, you know, certain firefighters per truck.
The 1710?
NFPA 1710. Yeah. And that's something, sir, again, that kind of the first slide I showed you was where we're at now compared to a lot of the other departments in the area and the national averages and things like that. Again, that's certainly a standard that we, I think we need to move forward to over the next six to eight years. Again, we're, we're unique in this city because we have six stations right now, but we're 38 square miles. Versus you look at Kissimmee, they have, you know, four stations, but they're 22 square miles. And they have a population that's almost double ours. You know, it's so, when you look at sort of things like that, when our population starts to increase and our densities start to increase, that's really when we need to add additional firefighters. And, you know, when we look at that average, that's why I keep track of that national kind of average and see where we're at compared to other places and our local areas. And so it's something we're definitely want to aspire to in the future.
So when, I'm glad that Commissioner Anderson asked that question. Where at, and I know you did state it, how many residents? And so do you have a benchmark? In other words, when we reach a certain population?
Yes.
Then we are going to implement for on a?
When I, when I started as the fire chief, you know, one of the things I wanted to just make sure we were at is 1.9 to 2 firefighters minimum per thousand. Right now, I think we're at 1.3 something, or two, I'm sorry, 2.38, I believe it was.
I mean, because that's been, that's been an, uh, an ask and a concern probably in the last three years. I mean, we finally did get that third person, the third firefighter. But, oh God, where was it that you had? What our population is right now?
So right now, our population's 58,293.
And what is Kissimmee? And because you did say.
89,100.
And they, do they have four?
No.
They don't. But they have a smaller.
They have four stations.
And how many firefighters do they have, you know?
117.
So we've got more firefighters and we've got way fewer people. Yeah.
We have.
We have 134 firefighters. They have 117. And they have 89,000 people and we have 58,000. So we have more firefighters per capita than anybody in the area, I guess.
Yeah, but we have 38.
I just asked, I just said to, per capita. Per capita, do, is there anybody in the area, chief, that has more firefighters per?
Oh, Winter Park's 2.5.
Okay. But everybody else, we're, we're above them.
Winter Park and us do EMS.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, any last thoughts? Okay, before we bring up Chief McKinley?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Don't throw too many things at me. Alright, I'm not sure how I'm going to put my hour and a half presentation into the time I got left now, so hang on. And Mr. Olson, I have everything I've asked for. I sent you a text. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and City Administrator, Mr. Smith. During this budget cycle, just like previous budget cycles, the Apopla Police Department has looked at the best way to police our city while being physically responsible. We continue to look at technology to help us improve the services we provide to our community and look at ways we can continue to improve our community policing efforts to support our community. This year, we have reorganized the agency to be more efficient, prepare us for the future, and work on our succession planning. Based on the organizational changes we have made and the measurements we rely on to monitor our performance, we have submitted a budget that we believe will help us prepare for the future. During our presentation, we plan to cover our accomplishments, our challenges, as well as our needs and concerns as we prepare for the future. Sometimes I've been accused of going pretty quick and moving right along. So if you need something, just get my attention and I'll slow down and stop and answer your question, so. Or we can address them at the end. I have not gone through like normal line item stuff. I've hit the highlights of our budget. Most of our costs are normally related to personnel costs and vehicles, so. When viewing the department overview, when reviewing the department overview, we must start by considering the role of public safety in our community. It is essential to remember that public safety involves more than just law enforcement. It encompasses the well-being and security of all of our community members. Key aspects to keep in mind include, as the city continues to prepare for rapid and increased growth, the safety of our community will always be a top concern of our residents. An investment in public safety fosters trust, makes citizens feel secure, engages people in their communities, and supports economic activity. Places with lower crime rates are perceived as more desirable, attracting visitors, businesses, new residents, and an increased talent pool. When people feel safe, they are more likely to conduct business in their community and participate in local business, dining, and entertainment offerings. Public safety is a key factor for individuals looking to move into a community and for companies looking to invest in a community. Our accomplishments. Received $200,000 in urban area security initiative funding to participate in the county-wide license plate reader initiative. We rolled out new public safety radios to the police and fire department. With a recently completed salary survey and increase in starting pay, our salaries remain competitive in the local market. Transitioned swarm personnel to 12-hour shift, which has put more officers on patrol. Restructured the agency to plan for pending retirements and succession planning. Awarded approximately $142,000 in grants. Continued to conduct advanced training of personnel such as active shooter training, RIT training, de-escalation training, and fair and impartial policing training to ensure our personnel are well-trained and aware of the issues facing the policing profession. The department is proud to announce that we have been selected to send a manager to the prestigious FBI National Academy in September of this year. Lieutenant Jason Wortman has been chosen to attend this esteemed program. Some of the challenges we continue to face, although we have begun to make progress recently finding qualified applicants for police officer and communication technician positions, continues to be very challenging to fill those positions. Competitive pay and benefits will continue to be a moving target as surrounding agencies continue to make adjustments to attract new personnel. Although our salaries are competitive at this time, we will have to continue to monitor, monitor the market to ensure we remain competitive during the fiscal year 24, 25. I mentioned salaries being competitive. And although our current starting salary is competitive, we will. I mentioned salaries being competitive and although our current starting salary is competitive, we will have to continue to monitor the market as OPD has raised their starting pay. And is raising it again on October first of twenty twenty four. Our starting pay is currently just over sixty two thousand dollars, which puts us up near the top of the central Florida market. However, with the increase OPD will have on October first, their new starting pay will be just under sixty five thousand dollars. The sheriff's office current starting salary is approximately fifty five thousand dollars. However, they are considering opening their contract mid-year to provide a pay increase to their swarm personnel. This pay increase could be as much as thirteen percent, which would place their starting pay at just over sixty two thousand dollars also. There also can is, they also consider are considering. An additional increase in October that would put their starting pay above OPDs, and that's why I caution that we may be chasing salaries again next year, even though we don't plan on doing it right now. With our increase in starting salary and switching our hiring practices to offering sponsorships, we currently have over ninety applicants we are processing. We haven't seen these numbers, uh, numbers like this in years. And if we want to maintain this progress, we will have to continue to closely monitor the market to ensure our pay remains competitive. Our community policing accomplishments, we had another great year working with our community. We were able to sponsor over a hundred and thirty children during our annual shop with a cop event, thanks to the support of our community and community partners and Walmart. We continued our monthly cookies and milk with a cop program, thanks to the continued support of McDonald's. We held our annual national night out, youth summer camps, women's self-defense classes, citizens' police academy and many other courses to support and interact with our community. Once again this year, with the dedication of our police officers, staff, volunteers and community, all the events were very successful and brought our community together. We're proud of the work and dedication. We should all be proud of how our sworn and civilian members of the Apopka Police Department have handled the challenges that and adversities they have faced over the last couple of years. Despite short staffing levels requiring them to work longer shifts and more hours in a very difficult job, they remain committed to ensuring our community's safety. It continues to be an honor and a privilege to work with each one of them. Our population, you saw some of this from Chief Wyland. This slide illustrates the population increase based on an average annual growth of thirteen hundred and twenty nine residents over the past eighteen years, so. I'm looking at a population in at the end of twenty twenty four, somewhere around sixty thousand, I think that aligns with where he was in twenty twenty five. Um. A growing population increases the demand for public safety, Apopka continues to grow rapidly. In two thousand thirteen, there were sixteen thousand households in Apopka, according to Community Development Department. In April of twenty twenty three, the Community Development Department showed the number of households had increased to twenty one thousand, a little over twenty one thousand. This represents an approximate thirty two percent increase in the number of households in the city over the past ten years. As of April twenty twenty three, the City of Apopka's Community Development Department estimated the population of Apopka at fifty eight thousand two hundred and ninety three residents. This is an increase of fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty four residents since two thousand and thirteen in the last ten years. Over this ten year period, the average annual resident growth was approximately fourteen hundred and sixteen new residents per year. This does not include commercial or industrial growth during the same period. According to the Community Development Department, there are approximately seven thousand four hundred and eighteen dwelling units planned or under construction in the City of Apopka. This is down from eleven thousand three hundred and sixty six dwelling units planned or under construction just last year. This decrease is due to some of the previous planned development being completed and some of the planned development not coming to fruition. Based on the city's community development unit, in April of twenty twenty two, the average household had two point seven persons per household. This residential growth will add an estimated twenty thousand new residents to the City of Apopka over the next several years. Although some of the developments used to compile these numbers may have been completed by now. We have not added any additional authorized positions to the police department since they were planned or completed. When referring to the fact that we have not added officers to completed projects, it's important to clarify. That while we have increased our staffing in the last two budget cycles, these efforts were focused on catching up with the previous growth and improving our per capita ratio. With an average annual increase of fourteen hundred residents, maintaining a per capita ratio of just two point three three officers per one thousand residents would require hiring a minimum of one point six five. New officers each year, that doesn't account for all the planned or approved growth. To plan for the possibility of twenty thousand new residents over the next several years at a per capita of two point five officers per thousand, which is the current per capita according to the Florida Department of Law Law Enforcement. We will need to hire approximately fifty new officers just to support the future growth that is planned or under um construction. To reach or exceed the state average of officers per capita, we will need to continue to work close. To close the gap created by passing ongoing growth. Which will be which will need to be, which will be need to be a multi-year effort, sorry about that. This slide shows the growth of the police department over the past sixteen years. As you can see, our staffing levels remain relatively flat for many years. However, thanks to the support of this commission, we have experienced significant growth over the last three years. The support and the addition of new positions have been instrumental in helping us catch up and increase our per capita ratio. Despite these advancements, we still have progress to make to fully meet our goals. As you can see from this slide, our current per capita based unauthorized positions is two point two officers per one thousand residents. With the ten new positions we are requesting for the next fiscal year, our per capita will increase to two point three six officers per one thousand residents. Currently, the average per capita for surrounding agencies is approximately two point three one officers per thousand residents. The state average of officers per one thousand population in twenty twenty three, according to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, was two point five one officers excluding school and port police. When looking at the need for additional sworn positions, we do not just look at one data set such as per capita. It is also important that we look at the area of responsibility and the coverage the police department must provide. The civia City of Apopka spans almost six thirty six eight square miles, I'm sorry. Uh, this chart shows a comparison of the square miles for several local cities. The average square miles for the cities listed is twenty one point seven three. As you can see, at almost sixty thirty six square miles, we have the third largest service area among the agencies listed. We're only behind Orlando and Daytona Beach. This slide shows how many officers each of the listed cities has per square mile of service area. As seen on this slide, not only do we have a per capita that is lower than most agencies in our area, we have a very low average of officers per square mile. Our current officers per square mile is three point six seven. With the additional ten officers we are requesting for the next fiscal year, we will be at three point nine four. This is still below the average of the agencies listed of five point four five officers per square mile. Our uniform, our uniform crime report for part one crimes shows in twenty twenty three violent crime decreased by twenty percent in the City of Apopka. To the far right of the chart, you'll see a different number, which is how our crime analyst tracks crime. UCR utilizes a hierarchy rule when we report crime to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. And for internal purposes, our crime analyst uses incident-based reporting. We use incident-based reporting because it's more of an immediate way for us to see where crime is trending and where our patterns are going in the city so we can respond to those. Because UCR is a hierarchy report, it leaves out some of the crimes that we want to track. So she does a little bit better detail, but that's why those numbers don't match up because. UCR's definition of a burglary and our definition of a burglary don't always match up either, so that's why we have. Uh, UCR is going to incident-based reporting, they were supposed to be live on it three years ago, there's still problems. And um, I think sixty five percent of the agencies in the United States can't report to it yet, and we're one of them, so. Uh, nonviolent crime, oops. Nonviolent crime, which is mostly property crimes, were up one percent in twenty twenty three. This increase was driven primarily by motor vehicle thefts. Vehicle thefts can be contributed to the continued theft of Kia and Hyundai vehicles. Overall, part one crimes, combining violent and nonviolent, crime was down two point two percent in twenty twenty three. As you can see from this slide, our community, as our community grows, our calls for service continue to grow. These are calls into our communication center. Of these approximately ninety thousand calls, approximately a little over thirty thousand resulted in an officer being dispatched somewhere in the City of Apopka. In addition to our calls for service being up, our response, our response times were uh saw also a slight increase. We believe the implementation in March of this year of the twelve hour shifts and more officers on patrol will help address our response times. The next section of our presentation will cover our previous budget overview, personnel request, equipment request and capital improvement. This slide shows the police department's adopted budget since FY nineteen twenty and our proposed FY twenty four twenty five budget request. As you can see, our budget has seen the largest increases in our field services division, which primarily consists of our patrol unit. And our support services division, which mainly comprises our criminal investigations division. The biggest increase in our budget over the last six years can mainly be attributed to the salary increases we had to implement to remain competitive in the market. Unfortunately, as previously mentioned, I don't believe we're done adjusting our salaries to remain competitive. And there is a strong possibility that we may have to adjust them during the fiscal year twenty four twenty five budget cycle. Another significant part of the increase is due to the rising cost of vehicles that have uh that we have to replace. For example, in fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for a marked Ford SUV, that's completely outfitted, the vehicle completely outfitted. In the fiscal year twenty four twenty five budget request, the same vehicle has increased to sixty eight thousand dollars. It's eighteen thousand dollars in three years that those vehicles have gone up on average. We will have to replace approximately fif- fifteen vehicles per year, which would cost a little over a million dollars, that's just to keep our cycle going. Um, on a positive note, our vehicles are lasting longer than we anticipated. It appears that on average, they'll remain in our fleet for approximately seven to eight years, as long as they stay in good shape and we'll always have the outliers that we'll have to get rid of. Field services request, we are currently authorized a hundred and thirty two sworn positions. However, to improve our per capita and officer per square mile ratios to be closer aligned with the state average and surrounding agencies. As well as prepare for anticipated growth, we must continue to add additional officers. We are requesting ten additional authorized positions for fiscal year twenty four twenty five. Although we are currently have fourteen vacancies to fill, we have over ninety applications we are working through. And believe we will be able to fill these vacancies along with the additional positions we are requesting in the next fiscal year. These additional authorized positions will help us achieve our target staffing needs as well as assist us in keeping up with the residential and commercial growth occurring across the city. I would like to take a moment to update you on what we've done to improve our recruiting efforts and increase the number of applicants that we're seeing. As of today, we have, like I mentioned, have over ninety applications we are processing, which is a number we haven't seen in a long time. One of the biggest reasons we have seen this significant increase in applications is due to our increase in salaries over the last couple of years to remain competitive in the local market. Additionally, we have modified our recruiting efforts to include sponsoring applicants through the law enforcement academy. We had a history of looking for certified uh personnel, everybody wants to be sponsored through the academy now. Um, in our fiscal year twenty four twenty five budget request, we've requested to fund twenty sponsorship positions. Which we believe will continue to help us hire personnel and fill the vacant positions that we currently have and the positions that we're asking for.
Are you getting uh and? Any applicant applicants that are coming in from out of state? Because I know our governor had a program sort of um promoting.
Yes.
Out of state.
But they haven't been very successful.
Come in to Florida.
We have hired several from out of state. Um, I think, you know, you've met a couple of them from New York, um, during the middle of their training program, they decided to go back to New York. Um, we've had some other ones that have decided to get out of law enforcement when they've come here. Uh, we haven't had great success with the um out of state ones, I mean, obviously, we're not going to turn them away, we're gonna uh do our best to bring them on board. Uh, one of the things we are um have have thought about and have discussed internally, we think with the sponsorships that we are probably going to help with our minority recruitment. Because a lot of our minority recruits are looking for sponsorships. And we see a lot of the sheriff's office and Orlando Police Department picking up minorities because they are sponsoring them. So I think with our sponsorship, we will increase some of our minority hiring at the same time, so. Let's see. We are requesting a public records video redaction specialist. Due to a large number of public records requests handled by the police department, we are requesting an additional person to work on the rec- in the records unit to handle nothing but public records requests. We receive public records requests from the state attorney's office, public defender's office, other law enforcement agencies, state agencies, federal agencies and the community. At this time, records requests and video redactions are handled by all members of the records unit, the sergeant that oversees the records unit and sworn police officers. This is in addition to the other assignments required of their positions. Even with all these individuals, it is difficult to keep up with the number of records requests we receive. This additional person will not be able to handle all of them, but will relieve a lot of the burden off the records personnel. As you're probably aware, the city began using software to receive and track public records requests in May of twenty twenty three. Since implementing this software, the police department alone has received a total of two thousand five hundred and thirty four public records requests. This is just over two hundred requests a month, and we are seeing this number trend upward each month. For instance, in January of twenty four, we had two hundred and forty public records requests. By May of twenty four, we have three hundred and fifty six public records requests. Public public records are unique in the fact that almost every record and video, I'm sorry, police records are unique in the fact that. Almost every record and video has to be reviewed and redacted in accordance with Florida statute one nineteen. While we have technology that helps us identify sections of reports and videos that need redaction. The records or videos still require thorough review to ensure we do not release any law enforcement sensitive information. Or information mandated for redaction under Florida statute one nineteen. This process is very time consuming and our personnel, especially when it comes to videos, must which must be reviewed and redacted frame by frame. Vehicle and equipment request. Here are some of the new items, vehicles and equipment being requested in the in the FY twenty four twenty five budget. In the chief's office twenty two ten, we're requesting a W W C C TV trailer with cameras, that's one of the the trailers like you see in the Walmart parking lot. And some of the other facilities around different towns and cities. Uh, this monitoring trailer with cameras will be deployed at events and locations around the city as a force multiplier. You will be able to live stream video and to our command post during events and to our laptops. This uh equipment can be used in areas experiencing experiencing specific crime trends or patterns to act as a deterrent and provide additional surveillance. In twenty two twenty, field services, we are requesting to replace fourteen aging patrol vehicles with Ford interceptor SUVs or F one fifty interceptors. Ten additional vehicles are being requested to be added to our fleet for the ten new positions we are requesting in fiscal year twenty four twenty five. In twenty two thirty, support services, we are questioning, we are requesting to replace six aging unmarked vehicles with new, to be determined, unmarked vehicles. These requests aim to enhance our operational capabilities, improve safety and address specific crime tend trends effectively. Our capital improvements, police department training facility, I brought this up in last year's budget, uh, but it's becoming more of a priority. We are requesting a needs assessment to be completed early in next fiscal year for a police training facility. With the expansion of the fire and police departments, both agencies combined have outgrown the Gillum Training Center. The fire department's expansion and quest to be a regional training facility have required the majority of the training facility and the existing building for their training needs. Additionally, the existing firearms range continues to generate complaints from the surrounding community. These complaints are expected to increase with the addition of a subdivision immediately to the east of the range. If this subdivision is built, it could require additional improvements to our range. I don't think that our berm on the east side of the range meets the NRA standards, which is our range standards. The new training facility would include the following items. It would have an indoor range facility, the police department only utilizes our existing firearms range Monday through Friday between eight AM and five PM. With a few exceptions to reduce the community complaints. This is not ideal since we are a twenty four hour, seven day a week operation. It does not allow us to do low light shooting for those officers that work nights. Due to the growth in Apopka and the expected growth of the police department and indoor range has become a necessity. A driving course, currently, the police department does not have a dedicated driving course, neither does the fire department actually. Um, or access to one. We previously had access to the Lake County Sheriff's Office driving range, however, it has become increasingly challenging to schedule time there. Without a driving facility or reliable access to one, we are unable to complete high-risk driving, pursuit driving or other tactical driving courses essential to our profession. To include a skid pad for inclement weather and so forth. The training facility would also have a defensive tactics room due to the fire department's training needs, the classroom in the current. And this is nothing personal towards fire department, by the way. In the current Gillum Training Center have become obsolete for both agencies to utilize, there's just not enough room in the classrooms out there in the Gillum Training Center to. Uh, accommodate both of us anymore. As a result, the police department does not have a classroom large enough to conduct defensive tactics training. We actually have to move tables in our briefing room, we've used the Billy Dean Center at times, we're just finding different places. I know we may have to start using because as we grow, we might have to start using the VFW. Uh, but that requires us taking up all the mats that we have to have to perform our defensive tactics training on over there. Tote them back to the Gillum Training Center, uh, it's just a lot of time and effort spent on that, so we do need a a new defensive tactics room. Due to the increased need in training classrooms between police and fire departments, there is a limited space available for both agencies to conduct classroom training. So we are gonna have some training classrooms in the uh training facility also. And understand that uh when I say this is a police training facility, there's no reason that if the fire department needed a training classroom or one. You know, some of the facilities, the driving facility obviously would be for both um departments, so it would be co, you know, used by both departments. And we're not saying that we're gonna put a padlock that they don't have a key to on the gate, so. We still love them. We still love them and invite them over. Uh, we'd also like to put a simulator in there. Our current simulator, which is over fifteen years old, is outdated and obsolete. Modern simulators offers, offer three hundred and forty degree active shooter scenarios, de-escalation training, tactical shooting training, and more realistic scenarios. Our canine training area would be moved over to the new training center. It's currently next to the Gillum Training Building, and we just move things over to the, uh, new training center and give that, um, grass space back to the fire department. Our fitness assessment course, the current fitness assessment course for our annual fitness test in new recruits is laid out around the current infrastructure of the Gillum Training Center. It sort of weaves them, its way through different obstacles. A dedicated area to complete the fitness, uh, assessments is needed. Our SWAT tactical training is currently at the, um, current outdoor range and will need to be moved to the new training center. Improvements and enhancements to the SWAT teams' training will be able to be built into the new training facility. As I mentioned last year in my presentation, this property at the Gillum Training Center off Cleveland Street is owned by the city and consists, I believe, of a little over ten acres, if my math is right. Don't trust me on that one, though. Um, the fire department is establishing a regional training center. At the Gillum Training Center, this location would allow the city to keep all public safety training in one location and allow some training areas to be shared. The needs assessment will determine if this property is large enough to accommodate the police training center, or if another location must be sourced. Given the significant importance of this training center to the police department, the city, and our community, we are requesting that the needs assessment begin early in fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget cycle. We aim to have it completed promptly so that we can potentially move in, on to the architectural and design phase immediately after the needs assessment is finalized. The men and women of the Apopka Police Department want to thank our mayor, city administrator, commissioners, and community for their continued support. At this time, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Anderson, why don't you start out?
In regards to the hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in grants that was received, can you kind of go over what agencies you receive that those funding sources from?
The hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in grant funding? Most of it's, uh, JAG grants from the feds that's passed through, through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Uh, it, those are based, those are sent to the sheriff's office, they're distributed by population. Uh, I think we average somewhere between twelve and thirteen thousand dollars when they come out. Uh, they're sporadic, they come at different times, uh, but most of them are Birm grants, JAG grants. Some of them were Department of Transportation grants for traffic enforcement, overtime details such as pedestrian, uh, enforcement, distracted driving enforcement, and, and stuff like that.
Okay. Are there any grants that you are aware of that we can apply for that can help with some of the needs of the department?
Uh, I'm not aware of any for, I mean, our biggest need obviously is the, the training facility, cause I'm, you know, we're talking a large amount of money there. I would suspect probably in today's market, twenty to twenty-five million dollars. Indoor ranges are very expensive. The, um, air purification system is outrageous, um, but that's where we're gonna have to go. We don't have anywhere in this city that we can, um, shoot. I know that Okoye, the mayor and I have talked, Okoye is building an indoor range, uh, but it's not even gonna start with enough, uh, lanes to take care of our needs. We can probably use it occasionally, but we will overcome what that facility is gonna do. Um, I can look for, uh, I know Lieutenant Wortman handles our grants, and he does look for grants all the time. Uh, I get information on grants that are out there. I haven't seen many grants that, um, for firearms ranges or training facilities. That's our biggest cost, so.
And another question is for the sponsorship opportunities that's through the academy, what are the guy, some of the guidelines? Do they have to stay with the department for a period of time?
They do have to sign a contract that they'll be with the, uh, police department for two years. Uh, if they at any time leave, they don't make it through the academy or anything else, they have to reimburse us for the academy cost.
Okay. And the average of that sponsorship is how much per?
Four thousand dollars.
Four thousand. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Blaskis?
Um, I was interested in the property that you were saying by the Gillum Cent, uh, Training Center, is that a consideration? Are you actually moving forward to do anything with that property?
I think that's the best way for the city, because again, it allows us to build a facility that can be used by police and fire still, as far as the driving range, some of the classroom facilities and everything else. It's property that you probably don't notice, it's behind, if you're at the Gillum Training Center parking lot, looking to the east, there's a dry retention pond there. It's to the north of that dry retention pond, it's still wooded. It goes to whatever street's north there, I can't remember what it is right now, but I think that's the best place to try to keep us centrally located for all public safety training, so that we can share our resources and, and everything else.
So has anything been presented? Uh, any site design, anything like that?
No, that's what I, I mean, we have to go through the process, just like we're doing with the public safety building. We have to do the needs assessment to show what the needs are, what the size of the building, the square footage of the building would be for our needs. Um, we have gone down, the mayor and I went down to the Kissimmee, uh, police department's, uh, indoor range and looked at, uh, their training facility there. Uh, they don't have a driving range attached to theirs. Uh, we would need the driving range and some of the other facilities attached to ours, uh, but it would be somewhat probably mirrored after what the Kissimmee Police Department's indoor range and training facility with their defensive tactics room, uh, training offices for their training staff and some other things. But we have to go through the process of the needs assessment, then the architectural, uh, design, and then the build, same thing we're doing with the public safety building. So right now, we're just asking to do the needs assessment as soon as we can in the next fiscal year. Once we get the RFP out, uh, or RFQ, whichever way we go, RFQ usually, um, and then select a company to do the needs assessment, then we'll have an idea of what the layout would look, whether or not the property is sufficient for that, or how much property we'd need to look at.
Did the RFP go out?
No, we haven't, uh, we're just now, we didn't request funding in this year's, uh, budget for the needs assessment. I'm requesting, starting October first, obviously, the hundred thousand dollars is being set aside for a needs assessment. That should cover that. Um, architect and design is gonna depend on the cost of, you know, what the needs assessment comes up with. Uh, that may be a budget amendment that we have to come back with during next fiscal year.
Is that a much opposed to do, uh, needs assessment?
I think it, it'll probably less, it should be less than that. I think if I remember correctly, the one for the, you weren't here, I don't think, for the public safety building was somewhere around ninety, ninety-two thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this one won't be as complicated, because it's just really more square footage for what the average defensive tactic room is, what the average classroom is. Uh, depends on the, obviously, the number of, of lanes we need inside our indoor range to accommodate our current staffing and our future staffing obviously needs to be taken into consideration as we, uh, do all of this. Um, the needs assessment for the public safety building obviously had to cover employees, different sections, different departments, the comm center, IT and everything.
The public safety building is really more about the support staff. This here is for training, uh, for both fi- using the fire department and the police department will share this space?
It will be primarily for the police department with the, the indoor range is gonna be the majority of the building. Uh, there will be some classrooms that obviously we'd be happy to share with the fire department. The driving course would have a, uh, skid, wet skid pad on it for inclimate weather, uh, that the fire department would obviously, they were out, actually, I was out of Gillum today, and they were out there driving, um, in the area we have. We have a driving pad out there, but unfortunately, way before me, when it was built, it has wrong asphalt on it, to be able to do inclimate weather training on it.
I think this is a, a great consideration to keep it all central. Um, I'm just hoping that it, so you're not looking to do it now for this, this twenty-four, twenty-five, um, fiscal year?
My goal is, make sure Ms. Sherman doesn't hit me in the back of the head when I say this. My goal is to have the needs assessment, architect and design done during next fiscal year, if we can get that done, and then move on into construction the following year. So within two to three years, uh, I mean, it'll probably run in, and unfortunately, it's, you know, because of the growth of the city and the expansion of the police department and the fire department to cover our growth, we've just outgrown everywhere we're at. And, you know, I, I think you all get the complaints from the neighbors every once in a while. When we start our annual rec- uh, certification every February with our handguns, the complaints come in. When the SWAT team's down there using high-powered rifles and everything, the complaints come in. Uh, we just, you know, we need to get out of that location where we're at.
And, and, uh, excuse me, Chief, didn't you estimate the cost of this to be about twenty-five million?
I would suspect, I, I think, back when Kissimmee did theirs, but theirs included a fire tower, it was somewhere in the area of eleven million dollars. I would suspect with, you know, the cost of construction these days, and again, just like everything else, the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost. Um, I would suspect we're gonna be in the neighborhood of twenty, twenty-five million dollars. Uh, you know, and, and I think we can make the property work, cause worse comes to worse, you know, we can make it a two-story building, just as long as we have enough space there for the, um, driving range. Uh, but I would think that, um, if it is truly ten acres, uh, but that's me trying to use the county, uh, appraiser's website to measure the distance, so don't trust me on that one.
Okay.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Do you know how many acres the, uh, facility in Kissimmee takes up?
No, so I don't, but they have some fire training facilities there too. I mean, I could find it out, but, um, they also had, um, a fire tower built and, and next to their indoor range and some other things. Um, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that ten acres should do it. Again, even if we had to put, you know, classrooms above the defensive tactic room and the training rooms and stuff like that, obviously, we're not gonna put, um, buildings up above the range. Um, I'm sure they can put some kind of floor there that would prevent it, but, you know, I'm not an architect and, and I'm not a construction personnel that might be able to say we can go straight up and, and do what we need to do. I, I think we can work something out to make that property work, and I think if we can make that property work, it's beneficial to the city and obviously the police and fire department.
All right. Um, well, and, and the reason why I ask is, is for two reasons. I mean, I like the idea that they, you say you have an over ninety applicants that are applying for these positions, and, uh, I just want to say that I'm still actively, um, pursuing the annexation of the unincorporated part of, of Apopka, so we're gonna need those applicants. And I know at one of the workshops, it was mentioned that we would need another fire station, and that same location was mentioned, so I just wanna make sure that we, uh, have room for a fire station there as well. And so I'm just saying that we need to include station eight in the capital improvement plan, uh, so, cause that's coming. And other than that, I'm, I, I support your proposal, your budget you presented, sounds good. Keep up the good work.
I, I would follow up and say that it's probably gonna be cheaper to buy, to try to buy a smaller footprint for a fire department than it is a training facility. So if that's where I, I'd never heard that, that the fire station might go on that piece of property there, uh, but, you know, the training facility is gonna be a much larger footprint than what a fire department would, so we have to go buy property, it probably better go buy property for a fire department.
All right.
I never heard that a fire department was considered for that location. Where was that, um, Commissioner Smith?
It, it was mentioned at one of the workshops that we had at the, uh, John Bridgerton, when it was asked if we annexed that in, uh, would we do another fire station, and it was said that because the city already owns that property, that would be an ideal location.
It was in one of our workshops?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have to go back and look.
Commissioner Nesta?
Uh, thank you for your detailed presentation as always, I appreciate it. To confirm, we need a, once this is approved, we need to fill twenty-four total spots, fourteen now and then adding ten, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, in reference to the discussions of the side of the land there, we do own northeast of that as well, another ten acres that abuts this as well, so there's space. So I think it's a good spot. I think you're gonna have plenty of space to do, even if there is a fire station need up there as well, I think it'll all work well. Um, the only other thing that I came up with was, uh, the floors in the, your building are a little rough.
Floors?
Mm-hmm.
As in?
The flooring.
Um.
Do we have any intention to make them look decent?
As in dirty, or as in falling apart? Cause heaven knows I'm falling apart, and we, I think they're either due to be cleaned or were just cleaned.
They're over, specifically the, that side entrance, the south entrance, it's a little rough there.
Yeah.
Peeling up and, and.
Well, you know, it, it, it comes down to, you know, I, I think, I don't know if I've had this discussion with you, uh, the restrooms could stand to be remodeled, but how much money do we want to invest into this building when we know that we have a brand-new building coming? You know, I think the goal still is October of twenty twenty-six. Um, so it's not way out there that, um, the building's coming, so I have to look at, where's our return on our investment? Do we want, you know, we do get fifteen thousand dollars a, a year to improve our facilities, and we do use it for the needs that we have, but I don't think it would be appropriate till I go and, and gut the bathrooms and, and remodel them at this particular point in time, uh, knowing that this building is gonna be demolished, uh, and probably be the parking lot, based on some of the plans that I've seen. You know, our building will probably be, you know, they're gonna have to build around our building, cause we don't have another secure facility for the police department to move into while they're building the new one. Once we move into it, this building will be totally demolished and will become the parking lot for public parking. So it's, it's a trade-off. I'll be more than happy to go and, and look at it. Uh, you know, we've tried, um, we did, when I, right after I first got here, we replaced some of the floors, we repainted the entire building. Um, you know, that was well before we thought about, you know, a public safety building. Um, and some of that is starting to get a little bit worn. Uh, I'll look at it and see if there's, you know, something we can do.
Maybe like smaller sections, just to.
We obviously want our employees to feel good, but I think, you know, they're all excited about looking forward to what's coming in the future.
Sure. No, I totally agree. And last one, I saw there's a line item for six hundred dollars for a Peloton bike subscription. Didn't know we had that. I'm gonna start using that.
Uh, it's in the city gym, it's available to all city employees, the fire department uses it, it's not, we budget for all the city gym equipment, replacement, the upkeep, the maintenance agreement, everything is on, in, in our budget. So obviously, the fire department, police departments, but yeah, it's my understanding it's used, not by me, obviously, but, you know.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, anybody from the public we should speak on, please, come on down, pal.
Yes, Mr. Olson.
Rogers, back at seven, West Main Street. Um, I'm just sitting here just thinking about all these numbers and dropping twenty million, I think it was today, for some type of building. Um, and I guess for me, just kind of listening to all this, has there ever been a thought to say, okay, the city is currently at, I think it's at thirty-six square, square miles. I know we have a JPR area that says that the city of Apopka can annex to this particular square footage. Has it ever looked at, say, what would that look like in the future? And saying, with the estimated from the census data, we're projected to be at whatever, let's say a hundred and twenty thousand people by, let's say twenty thirty-five or twenty forty. Has it ever been kind of looking at what we're gonna need when we get there to start the backfill to where we're gonna start to fill that gap? Because I know you guys mentioned it, some type of complex, public service complex. Uh, I think that was what, sixty million? I thought I heard at one point in time, I don't, I'm, I could be wrong, right? I've heard twenty million for this, yes, I mean, two days ago, swimming pools, and you just started add all this stuff up. And then as soon as you get it built, you got the maintenance, and then there's operation costs, so you got CapEx, OpEx. So it's just wondering like, how do you really start to see long-term? Because I know we're buzzing, but it's really succession planning, right? So where do we look like in ten and twenty years from now? Because there again, as soon as you build some, there's maintenance and expenses that comes along with it. Um, so just as far as projecting out what that look like, um, because we really have to start to get detailed with this analysis. Um, I know we're gonna be up against the, I guess, cuss every year with the military rate. I keep hearing it can only go so much, and then you see fees going up forty percent, but it is what it is at this point. Um, but I think we need to kind of start to really look more holistic on what it will look like in the future if we are gonna meet those numbers, cause we're going that direction. Um, I think you said it was seven thousand units possibly proposed? So what does that look like in, in whole, so you can kind of build out the city to that point and then start to backfill it as you go? But that's just kind of my thought and assessment. But I also say that if we can start to track, again, online, these things that's proposed, because it seemed like every time we come up, the stuff is in design, phases or whatever the case may be, to kind of see where we are. So again, check off, this is going to be done without timeframe, because sometimes you just wonder, like, what's really taking place and what hasn't. So that's just kind of my two cents from what I'm hearing, all right? But I just think we really need to start projecting out, just not this year, next year, but a little bit further. Thank you.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. Chief, thank you. I did get your text. At any rate, a couple of things is that I'm in the community quite a bit, as you know, and it's inspiring to see the way our law enforcement officers and our fire personnel handle themselves in the community. They've dealt with some very difficult situations, and it's amazing what you guys do, so thank you. I believe that based upon everything I've read with what's going on with Orange County and the city of Orlando, is that you should build in a 5% bump in the budget for the police department because we know it's coming, as opposed to just transferring money at a later time. Another thing for both the fire and the police departments, the aspect of we keep improving this new housing. It's coming. We're growing. Yes, but we have to look at the setbacks and a couple of the developments. A full-size pickup truck with extended cab is two feet into the sidewalk. That means people are parked on the street. There's times when I'm on patrol, I have to go two, three miles an hour to wiggle between traffic, much less I'm not in a hurry as the police and fire departments are. Something needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Jeff Tyre, 1120, Leg Drive. Thank you, chief. A great presentation. Just wanted to echo that if you look at the pay increases and the benefit packages that the police department has now, they're attracting more people, more quality people, and they're retaining those people. Please, city council, keep that in mind when you're talking about the fire union contract. Please keep that in mind. Just want to go back on the fire department rebuttal thing about the four people on the fire engines. I don't like comparing ourselves to Kissimmee, to Claremont, to other agencies. Our goal has always been to be the number one fire department and provide the best service to our community. That's what we have to keep in mind. Thank you.
I have no questions for the police department. But I do have a question about where are we with the charter issues that were brought to council and the work sessions that took place with that? Could someone give me an update on that, please?
Hang around and the attorney will, can you, are you going to hang around for 7 o'clock?
I'll be here as long as he wants to talk, but I got a question. I got a question, and that is that on Monday, I guess you went through the administrative budget, the presentation on that. Was there sufficient money put in there for the city clerk to conduct a charter amendment election? And if not, I would recommend you do that.
Answer is, I don't think so. So, okay, it's not in your budget, is it? Okay.
I would request that to be included.
Okay, all right. Okay, anybody else? All right.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. All right. We'll take a, we've got about a seven-minute break here, and we'll be back at 7.
And mayor, just before you do that, no. No. I just want to commend that fire department. We had an emergency at our church on Sunday during our worship service, and EMS responded immediately and came into the worship service and removed a 92-year-old member of our congregation. And because of the speed and the efficiency, she's doing well. And so I just want to commend them for an outstanding job on last Sunday.
All right. We'll be back at 7.